Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zorchak, roll call please.
Mrs. Caldwell.
Here.
Mr. Daudell.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Hickman.
Here.
Mrs. Rossler.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Schlock.
Here.
Mrs. Stepnick.
Here.
Mr. Zucco.
Here.
We have approval minutes. We have a student feature. Mrs. Caldwell, I think is going to prevent it. Nadia Freeman?
Thank you, Mr. Daudell. It's a pleasure to have Nadia with us today. She is the first ever student from Plumboro to be honored to be part of the Duquesne University Summer Institute, and we're very proud of her for that. We wanted to acknowledge her this evening. And Nadia, I'm going to let you tell us a little bit about the program.
Thank you. At first, I just wanted to thank the board and Dr. Glassbl for inviting me here. I'm honored to be the first Plum student to participate in the Duquesne University Summer Institute. It was a really good experience. I got to get a little taste of what living and being in college would be like for a week. I took college-level-based classes. Like, I was in class for like, two hours the one day, and I had free time, and I was, um, I had access to the whole Duquesne University. And at the end of that week, I was eligible to get a college credit. So that was really cool. And I met people from all around the United States. Like, there was one guy from Florida that I'm now friends with. A girl, Jasmine, ended up living in Plum, but I didn't know her because she went to Shady Side Academy, so that was pretty cool. And then, one other person, he was from Ohio, and it was good to have a good experience and just meet new people because some of them, we talk like, every day still. And that's pretty much it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What grade will you be going into this year?
Um, I'll be going to my junior year.
Oh, excellent. Well, congratulations. Enjoy your junior year.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Nadia, can we get a picture for the website? Maybe with a better backdrop, Chris? Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Freeman, if you want to be in the picture on our website, you're more than welcome to, maybe with Mr. Zarmach? Mr. Zarmach?
I don't think she wants me. I'll let her.
Are you sure? All right. Thank you again, and congratulations. We have a staff feature here. I'm going to ask Mr. Zorchak to introduce our ASBO certified representative. I'm going to ask him if he could introduce himself for us. How's that?
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present in front of the Plum School Board. Dr. Glassbl, appreciate you giving me the opportunity. I represent a company called Horace Mann. Horace Mann works with educators across the company, across the country, providing Ottawa homeowners insurance, life, and retirement products. But what we kind of focus on is our partnerships and our relationships. We have a very good relationship with ASBO International and also with PASBO. Part of that relationship is we're a proud sponsor of an SFO certification. This SFO certification is offered to business officials across the country. It's a pretty rigorous, and I know, you know, John can speak to it, but it's a pretty rigorous curriculum where they have to go ahead and, they get a code of conduct and a handbook. They have to be pretty prepared in order to get into the examination portion of the certification. And at the end of the handbook, once they complete that and they go through that training, then they're required to take two examinations, one an accounting examination, and then one's on school business, you know, business official, official transportation, things of that nature. John is only one of 12 in the state of Pennsylvania to actually go through this program and receive this certification. So on behalf of Horace Mann, we're extremely proud of our relationship with ASBO. I know the school district and the community should be extremely proud of what John has accomplished, considering he's only one of 12 in the state of Pennsylvania to receive this certification. So with that, John, if you want to come up and get your beautiful frame.
Chris, you want to get a picture for our website as well? Maybe the bookshelves make a better background than Officer Little's screensaver. Mr. Zorchak, could you guys step in front of the bookshelves for a nice, a high-quality picture for our website? We would appreciate it. And we'll make sure we send that to you as well. All right. Next, I'm going to introduce while we're finishing up there, and again, congratulations. I'm going to just, I think I already spoke about this, but this year, we're going to start beginning to train students. And I say that and I use that word as more like an informer abbreviated training in groups of thirty, and I'm not, and Officer Little will explain some of this, but we're going to start with a 12th grade moving down to seventh. We've talked about this for six months or so. We had a focus group, and what you're going to see is an abbreviated version of this presentation. Tomorrow at seven o'clock, if the board approves this tonight, we'll have a presentation here in the high school auditorium for any community member or parent that would like to see this, and parents can always opt out of this training. The opt-out forms are on the website. They were popped up when you loaded into the student information system. We have some here, we have some with the schools. But I think once you see the presentation, you're going to want your child to be a part of this. And again, grades 12 through seven. And again, tomorrow, 7:00 PM, Officer Little will be here with Sergeant Ricketts as well doing this. So Officer Little.
People on Comcast won't hear you.
Right. I've been a policeman for 23 years, thirteen, actually fourteen here in Plumboro. Prior to that, I served four years in the Air Force where I was a military policeman and also dealt with the security of priority resources, fighter jets, things like that. So I know security as it pertains to things like this. This is going to be my fourth year as the district's resource officer, and I was one of the first responders and one of the first on scene at the Franklin Regional stabbing the day of the attack. I'm also a certified ALIS instructor, and I'm going to explain to you what ALIS stands for here in a little bit as part of my presentation. I'm a walker and talker. I'm trying to handcuff myself behind the podium today because I want you guys to be able to pay attention to the slides that we're going to go through. The goal for this program that I've created is to help our students not only protect themselves in school, but any other place they may be put in dangerous emergency situations. So malls, movie theaters, restaurants, churches. As Ms. Gallagher probably can attest to, these are things that I've taught my own son, and policemen all over the country teach their own children every day, pretty much since birth. I always tell a funny story in that my son was probably, and who is going to be a sophomore here at the high school, I'm getting old. I tell a funny story, when he was four, he was visiting his mother, and he heard her alarm go off in her house one day, and he got up, instead of paying attention to what was going on, he got up and ran out the door. And it was like, eight in the morning on a snowy morning, so my ex-wife had to run and tell him it was okay because it was just his grandfather coming in the back door. So those are the kind of things that policemen teach their kids. We're going to try to provide a consistent, common sense-based approach for their safety, and again, in all these different places, not just to include the school. Mr. Wolf and I, he really helped me get these, we created an outline because I think consistency is going to be an important thing in this. I want everybody to get the same, to get the same message. A few important notes. This is not the same program that we teach the district's teachers, administration, and staff. That program takes about two whole days to complete. It culminates with a practical exercise where the teachers and the staff are actually put into real active shooter situations. They're required to respond appropriately in order to protect their students and themselves. We use simulated ammunition during these exercises, so they feel very real. We use airsoft guns, and the teachers actually get shot with the airsoft guns. And they get shot if they don't do the correct things, because if they do the correct things, then they shouldn't be getting shot at all. The reason we're not doing this for students is several. The risk of injury would be too high for them, and the information in the presentation is much more explicit and traumatic. We deal with a lot of things about Columbine. You get to actually hear 911 calls from Columbine, things like that, and I just don't think that our children are ready to hear that kind of explicit information. However, this will be everything the student will need to know as a basic guideline to keep themselves safe. As of today, only 13 teachers, 13, right, Mr. Wolf? And that's including the new hires, will have not have completed their ALIS training. So after Friday, we will have all teachers, administrators, and staff will be trained in their Phase One and Phase Two ALIS training. Something that I'm sure you guys don't know is about a year and a half ago, Mr. Hadley and I, when he was still the principal, the assistant principal at O Block, we did a focus group with seventh and eighth graders, and we got some good feedback from that. I'm going to read you a few of the statistics, and I'm going to read you the statistics from the students because I think it's most applicable. We asked students, "Do you think the training," it's very similar, it's based off of the things that you're about to see. "Do you think the training for an active shooter situation should be given to all students?" Before the focus group, 100% of them said yes. After the focus group, 100% of them said yes. The next question was, "The idea of receiving training for an active shooter situation scares me." Before the group, 93% said no. After the focus group, 100% said no. The next question was, "Do you feel confident that you know how to react in this kind of situation, or any other emergency situation, after receiving this training?" Before the group, before they received the training, 40% said yes, they were confident, and 60% said no, they were not confident. After the, after they received the training, 100% said yes. So I think this will have an impact for them, and this is something that we can massage and make better each year as we, as, you know, as society changes and we see the strong points and the weak points of the presentation. So before we get into the next slide, Mr. Wolf, I'm going to kind of teach it the way I'm going to teach the kids off of the outline, so if I'm speaking down to you, it's not, that's not my, I'm not trying to do that. I'm going to read off of the outline that I'm teaching to the kids. If you have any questions, please stop me and ask me that question at the time. That way, it's going to be fresh in your minds because this is an important subject matter. So I'm going to tell the kids, "If you watch the news or pay attention to current events, there have been far too many incidents where people have been attacked or other, by other people in public places." What I don't want to do is make kids afraid of coming to school. I don't want to go, "This is inherently a dangerous place because if you watch the news, all these school shootings are happening." So I'm going to use a lot of, "Bad people are doing this, public places," and we all know what those public places are. Some examples of these bad things that happens, they occur in schools, movie theaters, and malls. These things have hit us close to home with the shooting at the Monroeville Mall and the attack at Franklin Regional High School. The purpose of this course is to help you react to emergency situations like these in order to keep yourself safe. Can we go back one slide, Mr. Wolf? One more. So this is going to be the first slide. ALIS teaches what to do in an emergency situation in a school or any public place. Again, I don't want to say what to do in an active shooter or stabbing situation in a school. Next slide, Mr. Wolf. We're going to use a common sense approach to keeping themselves safe. This is kind of a funny little video that we've incorporated into our Phase One training, so if you just watch it, and I'll explain it to you after.
Whoa, that's not good.
Oh, I don't need this. I'm already late.
Somebody will come. Anybody here?
Do you have a phone?
No. Sorry. Somebody? Hello? There are two people stuck on an escalator, and we need help. Now, would somebody please do something?
Help! 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 Help!
I don't believe this. You gotta be kidding me.
I'm going to cry.
Well, there's nothing else left to do.
So let's hold on right there. The reason why, you know, this is a nice icebreaker, everybody always gets a little bit of a chuckle out of it, but it's accurate in that the police are not going to be here. I will be here, but it's very possible that something may have happened to me, or I'm engaging one of the bad guys. And so if I'm doing that, you cannot wait for somebody else to protect you anymore. In this, in this society that we live in, in this world, sadly, you cannot wait for somebody to come save you. You have to take an active part in protecting yourself, and that's what I'm trying to demonstrate here. These people, nobody would ever actually react like this, so we can't, we can't react like that in the future if there's an emergency situation in this building. We want people to have a plan. We do not want kids or adults to obsess about these kind of things. I have a cousin who was in the Marines. Every time he gets on an airplane, he closes his eyes, he starts to count rows to the, to the emergency exits. He's, he's, he's an obsessive over everything, and what I don't want is for kids to go into a restaurant or a movie theater or to school every day afraid. And I'm going to try to make sure they understand that. So currently, there are three types of alerts here at Plum High School. We have an external lockdown. I'm going to give you an example of why we would use an external lockdown. Let's say we are down at O Block or Holiday Park Elementary School when there's a bank robbery or something dangerous down near 286. We may put that school in an external lockdown. What that means is the school will continue as normal, but we're going to lock all the exterior doors. Any staff that is not currently teaching a class, they're going to man those doors to make sure whatever that problem is on the outside of the school doesn't try to come inside to the school. But class is going to continue as a normal day. Number two is an internal lockdown. That is, again, another non-dangerous event. If we go into internal lockdown, that's, let's say a medical emergency may happen, and we have to have paramedics come into a school. We're going to keep everybody in their classrooms, go into an internal lockdown, let everybody know what's going on, that it's not dangerous at all. Code purple is when we have some sort of active shooter or emergency situation. I toyed around with, with changing that because when you go to the ALIS class, they say, eh, the use of codes is not necessarily a great thing. But we'd been using code purple here for so long as our emergency words that I would hate to disrupt that and change it when everybody already knows it. We all sort of came to that conclusion. Yes, that's been, if somebody says code purple, and I'll get into it a little bit more, that means there's an emergency situation where these kids have to actively pursue their own safety. That's kind of what we're about to teach, so. Next, Mr. Wolf. All right, this is where we're going to get into something I'm going to get to, I kind of fell off my, my outline here, and I knew I was going to do that. Interestingly enough, if we think about it now, Columbine happened in 1999. I don't know that even our seniors, I mean, they're, what year were you born? 2000, so our seniors were born in 99, so a lot of them may not even have memory or recollection of what happened at Columbine. I'm going to ask them if they know what significant happened at Columbine High School, and tell them it happened in 1999, and it was one of the first and most publicized public school attacks. It occurred when two students attacked their school. During the attack, 12 other students and one teacher were killed. We're going to stay on that slide here, Mr. Wolf. Interestingly enough, Columbine's library is sort of set up like, all the way to the school. There is here, there's an external, there's an internal. Happened, the librarian and the teacher that were in there, they put those kids on lockdown, laid underneath those tables for minutes. Better way was to escape by going through that. And I know the question's always going to be, "Where do they go?", and we're going to get into that later, but I don't care where they go. We'll find them later, because wherever they're going to be, if it's outside of that school, or that movie theater, or that restaurant, is a safer place than inside in the time of an emergency. This right here, we're going to discuss what happened at Virginia Tech. Virginia Tech was 2007. It was a mentally, one mentally ill student used a gun and attacked people on campus. The one student killed 32 people and wounded 17 others. At the time, it was the deadliest shooting carried out by a single gunman in history of the country. This here is a picture of adult students, college students, taking cover in a French class at Holden Hall at Virginia Tech. That was next door to the hall that the shooting actually occurred in. So while they're still sitting in an unlocked room, facing a wall, I don't know what type of security that they think that provided them, they should have been a mile away, but they were still sitting in their classroom, which was adjacent to another building where people were getting killed. We're going to go into, what does ALIS stand for? You've got to hit those, enter each time. The A is for alert. The L is for lockdown. The I is for inform. C is for counter, and the E is for evacuate. Alert says, "You may, may or may not," and this is for everybody, this is for staff, teachers, students, "you may or may not receive an advance warning of any event. Personal observations or sounds may be the only alert that you're given, leaving little time for you to react." So if a student hears a gunshot, anybody can initiate an alert. Now, we're going to have to talk about that at length with them, that we don't want kids just running through yelling code purple, but if they truly feel that there is something that is an emergency that's happening or about to happen, then everybody or anybody should be able to initiate that. Lockdown. We support lockdown as a tool, but a tool only. It's a good starting point. If there's an emergency on the top floor of the school here, and there's a shooter in that hallway, obviously, you can't run out of the, can't run out in the hallway and try to escape the building. So we're going to lock those doors as a starting point. They're convenient, but we're no longer asking them just to lock the doors. We're going to teach them how to barricade the doors with the things that are in the classroom. We're going to teach them, if you are locked and safely barricaded in a classroom, you should not open a door until law enforcement instructs you. Class I usually, and a question I usually get in our, in our teacher class is, "How will we know that?" There is no answer to that yet. Each situation is different, so therefore, I can't tell somebody exactly what to do or exactly how law enforcement is going to instruct them that they're, they're then safe. We're going to show them examples, and we're also going to show them how to do it, but right here, that, that picture on the left with all the chairs, every classroom in this building, and really, in every one of our buildings. I can tell you this, besides our teachers, we have some pretty capable students here, and if somebody walks in with a gun, you're going to be able to grab that right out of their hands or pelt them with things. So everyone, here's another way, I think all, Dr. Glassbl, all of our doors lock, correct? In every school? We don't want to just rely on the lock, so if we can do other things to barricade those doors or make sure those doors don't open, that's what we're going to do. So if you can see, there's a belt tied around one of the L-shaped braces, you have some computer cord tied around the other doors. These are just examples of things we're going to teach them what to do. Yes, Michelle? To answer your question, I, I don't know that I can speak intelligently on what the safest, I guess it would probably be a preference for that teacher at the time. I'd really have to sort of look at it and determine what I thought, but I don't know that it really matters if they're doing the things that they should be doing and that they've been instructed to do. Mr. Wolf? Here's an example of another video about how, how locked doors really can't be trusted. This is a hospital door, actually, but it's very similar to the door here in the front of the high school. You have to hit play on that, Mr. Wolf. Nope, go back one. It's just another video. See, that was pretty, pretty easy for him to get in, not to mention the fact that it's a glass window, so if somebody has a weapon, a gun in particular, they can, they can shoot right through that glass. So the next part of ALIS is an inform. Inform is very similar to alert. It's a continuation of the alert, and we want to provide real-time information. And what I mean by that is, is if somebody yells, "There's a shooter in the hallway", well, we want to provide more information as we can, if possible. So if that shooter has gone down to the, or has gone up to the second floor, and you're on the first floor, it might be important information to have, because if you're on the first floor, you could possibly escape at that point. So how do we do that? Well, in this day and age, we have a lot of ways we can do. We can use the phones, we can use text, we can use email. So if these people are barricaded into their rooms, and they then have a chance to escape, and they believe they can safely escape, they have to have real information to make that decision. Lastly, the best one is evacuate. We want to provide the occupants with the ability and authority to evacuate. It follows a natural response of all mammals. We all have the fight, flight, or freeze. If you fight or you flee, you're going to be okay most likely, you're going to have a far better chance to survive. Freezing is not, is not really an option anymore. How to act when police arrive? Again, that's going to be a case-by-case scenario. You know, I think a lot of people may think that when the police come, we're going to start just talking to everybody. We may ignore everybody and run right to wherever that threat is. I may be involved in, in some sort of combat with somebody, and, and guys are going to be running in, and they're not going to have time to talk to students, teachers, or anybody else. So they need to know that police may ask them questions, they may get yelled at, they may get told to get on the ground. There's going to be all sorts of different things that we may or may not do, but we, they need to know that our response is going to be inconsistent in that we're going to respond to each event in a different way because we don't know how the events are going to unfold. The one thing we're going to tell them is, if you by chance come in contact with a weapon and you have, so let's say I incapacitate one of the bad guys, and I move on to the next bad guy. What we don't want to teach is for a student to grab that gun and run out saying, "I got the gun," because we don't want the police thinking that they're another bad guy. We're going to teach them to maybe find a wastebasket, or a box, or something to put that in so they're not mistaken for a bad guy. Sandy Hook, I fell behind on my notes again, Mr. Wolf. Sandy, Sandy Hook was the last incident we're going to talk about today. It occurred December 12th in Connecticut. One armed intruder killed 26 people in the school, many of them were children. When that incident occurred, some of the teachers instructed their students to hide in a classroom, bathrooms, or under their desk. The bad guy was able to walk into the classroom to harm the children, is where they were easy targets. I've never been to Sandy Hook Elementary School, but I'm guessing there were windows in those, in those, and I don't really know. If anybody knows, I'd appreciate to know. I should maybe Google it. Was it a two-story or one-story building? But I think about our elementary schools, and for the most part, I, I look at center. If it was a one-story building, get out those windows. Lying on the ground or huddling together provides no safety. In fact, it actually makes it easier for you to be a target. Several teachers in that school had their students barricade themselves in rooms, and they were not taught ALIS, they were just under lockdown procedures. Those teachers were a little bit forward-thinking. That bad guy could not access those rooms, and all of those students survived that attack in those rooms. I spoke earlier about how I want people to get out of here if they can. George Rosen at Sandy Hook found six kids in his driveway, sitting in a semicircle at the end of his driveway. He didn't know it at the time, but the, but the four girls and two boys had just escaped the massacre at Sandy Hook, and they were safe. I know for educators, it's going to really freak them out to say, "Guys, get out of here." But I can assure you, they will be safer anywhere else, and we will eventually find them. So, we have a few schools that we may have some window escape options. Let's use the high school as an example. So a student has to decide, "Am I going to jump out the window if, if things are getting bad?" Well, I think that's going to be something that they need to take some direction from their teachers, and if you're dealing with high school kids, especially one that's a senior or a junior, they may make their own decisions. Now, we don't want them to make a decision to try to unbarricade the door and run out the room, but if they decide they want to try to jump out the window, I can't stop them, and neither can the teachers. We're not going to advocate that if they're on the second floor, but they need to be taught that if they're going to do that, they need to evaluate that risk. Is that fall going to injure or kill them? What's the surface underneath? Is it concrete, or is it grass? Can they hang from the ledge to limit their fall? And can they use anything to help limit their fall, like belts? Um, and can they use anything to help limit their fall, like belts, clothing, ladders, things like that? So, this one's kind of unpopular, but it's the world we live in nowadays. If they're ever confronted with somebody that they can't escape from, if that person accesses their room, we're not going to teach them to get involved in mortal combat. I mean, I'm not teaching a, a self-defense class here, but we're going to teach them to create chaos. You want to shout, yell, scream, throw things. I always use this example, when I taught this class down at St. John's, one of the classrooms has a statue of Jesus. And I walked over to it, and it's got some weight to it. And I said, this is going to be one of the things I'm throwing at somebody. Uh, you're going to want to move, I can tell you, I'm a trained shooter, I've been a policeman for, like I said, twenty-three years. And I think I'm pretty good, but I don't hit my target all the time. Most of these people are untrained shooters, so if they're, if, if you're, if these kids or yourselves, or you're ever put in a position where you're at a mall and there's something dangerous, you've got to get out of there, you've got to move. Because it's not easy to hit a moving target. You want to create barriers, you want to divert that bad guy's attention, and last but not least, if you have to, you have to swarm that person to try to get that weapon from them. Of course, you know, if you've got high school seniors, that's a little bit different than third graders. Some of the things they can use for distractions would be fire extinguishers, staplers, books, any sprays that the teachers may have in the class. And this is another video, I kind of want you to pay attention to this one. Take the test, and you'll, they'll give you the instructions, and it just talks about how stimulus can affect accuracy.
This is an awareness test. How many passes does the team in white make? The answer is.
Anybody, who, how many? Ms. Rossler, how many did you count?
Ten.
Who said what?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, fourteen? Okay, let's play it, Mr. Wolf.
It's thirteen. But, did you see the moonwalking bear?
Now watch, this is the same video. Again, that's kind of funny, but if you've got books being thrown at you, your attention is diverted. So we're going to speak to the kids about how this applies to other places other than schools. Again, not to necessarily divert their attention off the school being an unsafe place, but the places where these teenagers are going are inherently places where things can happen. We're going to open it up, uh, this is a statement from Teddy Roosevelt. In the moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing. And then we're going to open it up on the last slide to questions that the students may have, and we're going to go into teaching them how to barricade their rooms.
What was the, you didn't go over the C? The C for counter?
You know what, did we skip over that?
Yeah, C was skipped.
I must have, I must have been, my attention must have been diverted. Yes. I apologize. I must have, I must have accidentally deleted that slide. It's counter. Um, let's go to, proceed forward a little bit, Mr. Wolf. I'm glad you caught that, actually. So counter basically is when we're dealing with throwing books. The, the one slide, right here. I'll add that back because I do have it, um, and we'll have to note that. I don't know how I, how I missed that one. But, um, this is essentially counter. Um, so creating chaos, throwing things, diverting attention and swarming. Thanks for, thanks for catching that. Any other questions? Ms. Bell, you had a question. Uh, I'm going to tell you right now, for, right now, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, it is still illegal for anybody but myself to carry weapons in the schools. No, they're. They're not doing this, it's still illegal. There's talk, it's in the legislature right now, and they're trying, they're discussing it. Now, me personally, I'm not an advocate of that, and I can tell you why. I am a trained shooter. I get trained twice a year. I know what to expect in emergency situations. Um, I believe if you have a teacher who's not a trained shooter, they could not hit their targets. Um, that also adds more weapons in the building that I don't know will be locked or unlocked properly. Um, there could be emergencies where you might have someone that's depressed, that's one of these people that are carrying weapons. So I am not an advocate, that's my own personal opinion, but as of right now, it's still illegal. Excellent. Excellent question. At some point, we had to make a cutoff here. First of all, I'm the only person that teaches this in the district. And so besides teaching this, I have to do my law enforcement duties as well, but that's not even the important issue. I don't want kids to be afraid, and their teachers are now very well-trained. So as far as elementary school kids, I think elementary school kids should be given direction from their teachers at the time of the event. I don't know that that's going to be something that they're going to hold on to for years to remember it. Because we're going to teach these kids, right now, everybody twelve through seven is getting it this year. And then next year, we're going to do, I think Dr. Glasspool and I discussed, doing it for seventh grade, and then again, a refresher in ninth grade, is that what we sort of came up with?
That's, that's the plan right now. What I think you need to remember as parents, I mean, again, we're going to have the video tomorrow recorded. If you wanted to sit there and watch that with your child, you could do that. And oftentimes, that may be better hearing it from, you know, I mean, we're trying to do this in very personal groups of like twenty, twenty-five. But for you to sit down with your son or daughter and, and do that in a more intimate environment, if that's what you want to do as parents, that's what you can do.
I just don't think a third grader, once they hear this, will remember it two or three weeks later, more or less a year later. That's just my own personal opinion, and, and their teachers, again, are very well-trained in this.
I have a question, how often will you refresh training with the staff? Early?
I mean, we haven't really discussed that because it's so, it's still so fresh.
Okay.
Yeah, we try to do CPR first aid, AED, two, three years, probably around the same cycle. Um, it, it may make sense, uh, training-wise, again, time being limited with what it is.
It's a good question.
It's, uh, we, our entire service day, uh, Friday is all revolving around safety.
Now, understand, as, as the Alice instructor here for the district, Alice does not teach, they have no direction on how to teach kids this stuff. They say, we think you should do it, go do it. So there is no actual program. This is the program that we've created, and this is the program that we've discussed with other places, and, and I put some time and effort into this. So I hope, I hope you guys got something out of it. Again, this is not the full program, um, that the teachers get, and they, it's, it's pretty intensive, it gets, it gets pretty.
Just to add real quick, you know, right now, we have the time to do this in small groups, uh, you know, twelve through seven. Um, but again, like anything, if, if Officer Little teaches this, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty times, by the end of the school year, we'll have an opportunity to reevaluate. So I think that that door has never closed. I know there are districts, um, and resources out there, uh, as young as kindergarten, with how to do this in a variety of different ways. Uh, we're just doing twelve to seven this current year. But again, parents can watch the video with their children and review that, but please understand, you know, specifically in elementary school, it's, it's typically take direction from your teacher.
You had a question? I've seen, I've seen the items. I think there's some value to the items. I still would say you have to barricade. I don't, I don't want to take any chances of, of something failing. Not only that, if you have an assault rifle, you know, those rifles can shoot through doors, things like that, so that, you know. I don't buy, I wouldn't be buying, that, that would be for these people to determine if they wanted to purchase those type of things. I don't know how much they cost. I'm sure some are better than others. Um, so I wouldn't be against it, but I would also say you still have to actively participate in, in, in barricading that door down.
A lot of this in our schools in emergency situations, and we have a quality to it for our teachers. Account for all of the students. Obviously, in these type of situations, that's not going to happen. That's out the door. Like, you don't, like what you said, if a student, if those six students weren't in that driveway, something, something really horrible could have happened. So, that's different, you know, when we talk about other type of emergency situations, and the teachers are.
Yeah, fires are going to be completely different than active shooters or stabbings. Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't mean to cut you off there, so I apologize.
It's just, it's, it's just, you know, it's so different.
And, you know, when I taught this, when I taught this at the elementary schools, when I said, let your kids, get your kids out of the room and tell them to go, the, the teachers gasped. Because it was something that would be so foreign to them to think, I'm not going to have control over these twenty or thirty kids. But, you know, I said, hey, if, let them go, let them run, get, get out of there. I know they don't want to hear it, and I'm sure you guys don't want to hear it either, I don't want to hear it. But get out, and we will find you later because you're in a safer place than you are where you're currently at.
And actually, I think the principal, I know Mr. Nysley in particular at center, he actually had a plan for the kids and told them where to go if they were outside. Um, because he discussed that when we were there.
Well, the only thing, now, I had, I wasn't part of that discussion, so I don't know exactly what was, what he said or what his feelings are. Um, I don't believe in rally points. And the reason I don't believe in rally points is, is if that bad guy knows what the rally point is, then they could be waiting at the rally points.
Or somebody's there waiting.
Yeah, we don't want, we, anywhere, we don't want to make it a consistent place to go, because if there are two or three people in cahoots, and if you're leaving center and your, and your rally point is Plum Convenience or whatever, then there could be people waiting at Plum Convenience, and then that would be a disaster. So.
All right, hey, thank you so much again, uh, that's going to be on the agenda to approve today, and there'll be a little bit more in-depth, um, presentation tomorrow. Officer Ricketts going to be there?
Sergeant Ricketts will be here tomorrow with me.
Sergeant Ricketts will be there as well, so we'll have two individuals, and we'll try to get a good video with some great audio, maybe we'll have some lapel mics or something, I don't know. But, uh, and we'll get that up there for parents as a resource to share with others and their children.
And one other quick, uh, question, I mean, you're, you're looking at going through eighteen hundred students. That's a lot of students, and you wanted to do that in small groups.
It's still very aggressive, but yes, that's why we've tried to do like a grade a month.
I don't think, that's a good question, Michelle, I don't think this is something that can be taught in an auditorium with twelve hundred kids. Because three-quarters of them aren't going to pay attention appropriately. I did that, that presentation on the internet safety, and there were kids right after that didn't remember anything that was said about it. So I think that an auditorium setting is not, it's a daunting task that we're going to try to, try to do, but I think the best way to do it is do it a little more intimate, where kids can ask questions and feel a little bit more comfortable and pay attention. I feel real confident, though, because the kids that we did on the focus group, there were, Mr. Hadley's not here, so I'm guessing there were probably around fifteen or sixteen that were, that was in that group. And they were really engaged in the training. So they seemed interested, I, I mean, I just think the world around them, they, they know the things, and they were engaged in that.
Well, I personally thank you, Officer Little, for all the time and effort you put into this.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you, Officer.
Thanks again.
Nice to see you.
At this time, uh, we'll have, take citizens' comments, if you could state your name and address for our record, we would appreciate it.
Tim Sandstrom, 7070 Havlin Drive. Sometime before the next solar eclipse, this board is going to have to vote on reconfiguration. Now, I can get a skirt, I can get mascara, and I can get lipstick, and I can put it on a pig, but it's still going to be a pig. So I'm going to call it a trailer. The administration here has never mentioned trailers or modular classrooms, as I want to politically correct it. So I don't think it would be incumbent upon the administration to have to make the decision as to who goes to a trailer if that boat comes that way at reconfiguration. You're talking about approximately a hundred and fifty students in those six trailers. So my question to the board is, if you're going to vote for trailers, who's going there? How are you going to pick them? Is this a lottery that you don't want to win? Uh, are you going to say to the parents at Regency Park, well, we've shuffled you a lot, so you won't mind being shuffled one more time? I think that the parents in this community deserve an answer if you think that that's the way to go in reconfiguration is to, what's the plan? How are those students going to be selected to go into a situation that does not involve being inside the building?
Christopher Cooley, 1620 Harvest Hill. As I mentioned, I'm a teacher at Franklin Regional, and I'm a Plum parent of a tenth grader and an eighth grader. Uh, with the help of both Michelle and Kevin, I have, uh, wanted to have a vision to bring, uh, an organization to Plum that I started over at Franklin six years ago. I am the executive director and creator of a five oh one C three nonprofit called Serving Other Souls. We've implemented it over at Franklin Regional Middle School for the last six years, and we've trained over five hundred kids in servant leadership activities where we have done different events, such as food drives at Thanksgiving, uh, clothing drives for the homeless at Christmas, taking kids down and they've prepared their own food for the people at the Ronald McDonald House, served those folks, interacted with them, learned about the children that were sick, gained empathy through that situation. We have administered the Miles of Smiles 5K, and we have helped countless families in their treatment of cancer. To date, we've generated over three hundred thousand dollars in goods and monies that we've given out to the needy. So the objective is, I've been the sponsor over at Franklin for the last six years. I've always wanted to grow it to other school districts across the region. And with the help of Michelle and Kevin, I was put in touch with Mr. Fischel over at O Block, and he connected me to Mr. Sadowski, who is the reach-out coordinator over at O Block. And he's done an exceptional job, and he does a great job with all the different philanthropic events there. Mr. Ess and I had an amazing conversation about a week ago, and we sat down for at least an hour, hour and a half. And we just talked on the phone, and we found that we have very, very common visions. And I wanted him to consider the implementation of making his reach-out club a pilot, or not a pilot, a satellite club, where SOS events would be added to some of his events. And after we talked about it, we came up with the consensus that we really liked the idea. Uh, I talked to Michelle and Kevin, and they suggested that I come here just to let you guys know of that. So there is no need for a stipend or anything for that, because Mr. Sadowski is already the approved, uh, reach-out coordinator. So SOS will be, in a sense, infused into the reach-out club, and we want to train kids in Plum. I am going to step down as the director at Franklin and stay on as the executive director, because I'm also starting a third chapter up at St. Bernadette's. I've been hired to be the youth minister up there in the evenings after I teach. So I will implement a third chapter at St. Bernadette's. We're going to get a new sponsor over at Franklin, whether it's parent, whether it's teacher, that's to be, remain. And Mr. Sadowski will run the program here at Plum. He will implement anywhere from one to four of our core events. He will consider working with the kids, and the kids will decide if they will do a food drive at Thanksgiving, the clothing drive at Christmas, go down to see the, uh, sick kids and their families at the Ronald McDonald Home. And we will ask them to send a portion of their staff, their kids, to help volunteer at the Miles of Smiles 5K that we hold in May. And we want to train those kids in the same servant leadership that we've trained the, our kids in Franklin, so we can grow the group. And I'm going to do the same up in Monroeville, and the objective is, over the next several years, to grow more chapters of SOS all over the eastern suburbs. So at this point, I wanted to recognize, uh, Dr. Glasspool has been a direct supporter of SOS over the last couple of years. He personally has donated out of his own money, I, I receive a check every year for the race from his personal bank account that, that states how much he backs it. And I'm very appreciative of that, thank you very much. But I wanted to recognize, I got little gifts. gifts.
I love it.
From the shirt company. Saw our mission, and he asked to create it, and he added the globe behind the man. Really has become... It's certainly... ...out of these two. Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah. Thank you.
Michelle, for all of their hard work that they've done in helping us, and I also have... And the advertisement never hurts.
Sure.
And then I also have a shirt of all of the board members for all last race. Thank you, Chris.
We should hold one up for the camera.
Yeah, we'll see.
This has been a long time coming, and I'm very excited. Press attention, and your formal approval to let you know that we were doing that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
And I want to thank you again. I know we've talked, and Chris has done so much work with our community, tireless with what you do.
Thank you.
You're a Jefferson Award recipient. You are a Plum distinguished alumni. You've lived in Plum your whole life. So, I mean, what you give back to this community is just outstanding, and I'm just truly excited that an SOS chapter will be partnered with the reach-out club at O Block, and I'm just looking forward to the partnership. And I want to thank you again, and Mr. Fischel, and for everybody that has worked to try to make this happen. And I think that our students will definitely benefit from this and our community. So thank you, Chris.
I'm excited as well because my daughter is going to be a first-time 8th grader at O Block, so she gets to be an actual member now. So it's cool.
Very cool.
Any board members have any questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Any questions for...
No. No, we've been talking about this for, what, six months a year in the Ted Board support, so thank you for coming.
Thank you for...
Thank you so much again for taking time.
Thank you.
Taking care of us this evening. Additional citizens' comments?
No? Okay, the agenda, please.
We have recommended approval of the following meeting minutes as listed.
Make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just want to make a note that we had executive session earlier this evening for personnel, collective bargaining...
Real estate.
Real estate litigation. Thank you.
All right. Athletic Committee, Ms. Michelle Gallagher, chairperson. Recommend approval of the contract with side effects for an LED football field sign.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, John, you said this is, even the cost upfront, we definitely would make more than enough to make up our money, right? Yeah, so it's definitely a good, good idea.
Good financials.
Yeah.
I just want to thank John and Dr. Brewer for their work on this.
And what it is, it's on the scoreboard in the football stadium, it's just going to be a sign, like a marquee, I guess, kind of, it's going to fit underneath the current scoreboard. So not going to replace the current one, it's just going to be like an LED display that's underneath the scoreboard.
This is Bob Alpina, right, John?
Yeah.
Michael and Bob, okay.
Mike and Bob, then. I apologize. Bob, Mr. Alpina, Dr. Brewer.
Any other comments?
Sponsorship and...
Yes. Very similar to the one in the gymnasium, gym two, gym one, rather.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Steven Elzer as a senior high girls head basketball coach at the contracted rate.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have discussions. I'm just very thankful we're hiring somebody because as my tier is on the board, I've gotten so many phone calls about who is the basketball coach. So now, we know.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following junior high volunteer assistant softball coaches for the 17-18 season as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Education Committees, Sue Caldwell, chairperson, recommend the following agreements as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the $5,000 grant from Granger for the edible classroom at Regency Park.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to thank a couple individuals and just explain this briefly. We had a parent come forward, Rachel Wolf. She's a Regency Park parent. She came forward because her employer offers a grant that she was aware of, and it's a significant amount, $5,000, to help our students at Regency. And she brought that forward, and I wanted to thank Mr. Pilly for go ahead and working so hard on filling that out and taking care of that. And I think it just goes to show how parents in the community step up to help our schools. And in particular, to highlight this effort, many of us work for larger corporations, even some small and medium corporations have grants that are available out there. So bringing those funds into our school district is just giving our kids extra educational opportunities. So I wanted to thank Rachel Wolf and Mr. Pilly again for their efforts on this and great educational opportunity for our students.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval for the following school sponsor MOUs: International Student Exchange Coordinator, $5,000; Best Robotics Sponsor, $1,000.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just want to say there's no cost to the district because this will be paid out of the funding with the Chinese exchange program.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Caldwell has a brief report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. Plum School District will be welcoming approximately 40 5th grade students from China this fall. These are English-speaking students who will join our current 5th graders in their classroom. They'll be spread out over the district and be able to enjoy the educational opportunities that our students have. So it will not only grow their horizons as Chinese students coming to America, in particular Plum Borough, but it will help our students to learn how students in other countries learn and how they may do things differently. They'll be able to work in small groups as well. They will be staying with host families here and experience not only the American culture, but in particular, our local culture here in Plum Borough. They will do activities with the families on the weekends and evenings, just as the families would normally have their activities planned. So it's a win-win for our school district. In addition, we're looking forward to working with creating an annual Chinese exchange student program beginning next year for the high school-age students. This will not only provide Chinese students with the experience of American high school life, but also, once again, expand the horizons of our own high school students while interacting with these international students. The program is also financially beneficial to our district as there will be a tuition for these students. And I again wanted to thank Mr. Zohrchak for bringing this program to our attention when he came here from his former employee in another district, not in the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, but we are therefore going to be one of the leaders in the public school district realm in Allegheny County to take this project on. And it's just a win-win. I don't want the community to think it's a financial burden, it's a financial win, and it's actually, although we like to highlight education, it's actually going to be a revenue generator for the school district. So you may or may not hear in the district that Dr. Glasspool has plans to travel to China. It's competitive. They have many competitive schools over there where their students want to come to America. So it's competitive for us. So Dr. Glasspool has to go over and sell our school district to leaders of these high-ranking high schools in China. And his trip will be completely funded by the Chinese program. It will be at no cost to the taxpayers. So he'll be working on that this fall as well. In addition to the Chinese program, at the education committee, we discussed the PSSA scores, and they were reviewed by the board and the community as presented by administration. Schools, scores were generally improved. There is some need for improvement, we felt. Of course, across the board, it's always good to continually improve, and we are going to be reviewing the math programs and scrutinizing those in particular for improvement over the next year. In addition, drug and substance abuse curriculum has been revised and expanded in the district, and it will include instruction at elementary through the high school. And this is in response to the national emergency which is occurring in our country with the opioid and drug abuse crisis. It touches us all. Next month, the education committee will also be looking at a review of high school credit requirements, and will look to include such courses as CPR. In addition, we will be exploring K-12 computer coursework. And also, we're going to be looking at an expansion of the college and high school options. Mrs. Rossler has brought some opportunities to us to share from other areas what they're doing. So we are going to be looking at that thoroughly. Dr. Yamnitsky will be working on that and bringing some opportunities for our high school students to earn college credits while they're here on the campus at Plum. So we look forward to that. Thank you.
Can I just add one more thing? So just with, you were talking about the computer curriculum. Administration will be presenting information on the K-12 computer curriculum. Frequently, I get asked, "Why don't we teach computers anymore in the school district?" And my understanding is, we do. It's just more incorporated with the classroom and possibly like keyboarding, not at the elementary level. So you have a presentation that you put together, Mrs. Yamnitsky, with that? She will have a presentation which will be on the website, and we'll be talking about that at the next meeting. So if you are one of those parents that wonder why your kid doesn't have a computer class, we're going to explain to you what we do to teach computers to your students.
And I have an additional question as well. Dr. Glasspool, because this sort of is a moving target, the number of homes that we need and the children we still need to house that are coming from China, and the timing, since this is a public meeting and folks will see it for the next couple, three weeks on TV, how many students do you currently have housing for? How many more do you need? And then my last question is, when is the next meeting if people want to come and find out?
So we've had seven days of advertisement, if you will, notification. I already have 25 students assigned, so I only need 15 more. We have a next meeting scheduled for, and I hate to say it'll be by invitation, but I'm going to, at that point, it's going to be September 11th where we bring all the families together and have our kind of final meeting before those students show up. But anybody that's interested in a home stay, they can send me an email or fill out the form online. And, you know, I'm pretty confident that probably the second day of school, we'll have 40 home stay kids housed.
And there is financial reimbursement for any family that is willing to take in one of our 5th grade Chinese visitors?
There's a frequently asked questions on the website, main page.
We're personally excited to host a student or two, depending on where we end up with numbers. So it's exciting.
It'd be a great program for our school, yeah.
As an aside, just in case, if there's anybody that's interested in hosting one of our five teachers, that may be a unique experience. They're between the ages of 28 and 35, and they just kind of said, "Hey, since you're being so successful with getting home stay families, if you'd like..." If there's an individual or a couple who would like to, you know, have some adults stay with them, just, you know, give me a call, send me an email. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Eastern Area Schools, Michelle Gallagher, representative. Approve the Eastern Area Schools Joint Committee 2017-18 budget as attached.
On behalf of the committee, second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Facilities Committee, Rich Zuko, chairperson. Mr. Zuko has a brief report.
It's going to be a very brief report. The only exciting thing that happened this month was that we did have VEBH become Architectural Engineer of Record, and we gave them the authorization to examine exactly what some of our major capital projects should be and will be in the next two years, as well as the exact demand that we're going to have on classroom size and what can we do to alleviate that. So we're waiting to have a facilities report in September, and I believe they're supposed to give us some kind of information at that time that they have found out since we requested it. And that's about all that's happened spectacular this month.
Before we move on, I have something I'd like to, I'm largely concerned of, and it's the Davis demographic report. We're going to be making decisions on what to do with our students, and that Davis demographic report is often elementary, 77 kids. The junior high, 20. The high school, 54. 144 kids as of today's enrollment. I have serious concerns about this. I know the parents, especially the elementary parents, are in a semi-panic, and there's a lot of conversation, a lot of assumptions, a lot of rumors, a lot of I-hurds going on about redistricting. We've said it over and over, and Dr. Glasspool, you said last week, no one's going to believe it until we do it. I think it's time that we say, send out the notifications so parents are aware that it is happening and they're a part of the conversation. In addition, I don't know if we want to have our parent committee come back together and relook at this information because this report is wrong. I mean, that's not a few kids wrong. It's severely wrong. And so, I mean, I don't know if we have to make a motion to do that and let parents know, but I think for full transparency and quite frankly, for their peace of mind or whatever, is it going to happen? Is it not going to happen? I think we just need to tell you, it's going to happen, maybe in conjunction with the reconfiguration. Is it going to happen this year, next year? I think we need to tell parents, and we need to tell them that relatively soon, not in two, three months from now, within the next month.
So just, I guess, some additional clarification. You know, the Davis demographics number, the numbers that were imported and put in the algorithm were, I believe, October 2016. And those numbers as of today, we're at about 150 off in a variety of places. So I have met with, I didn't meet, he's from Texas. So we had a conversation. We looked at our numbers right now and said, "Could we fit these kids into the existing building without renovation to Pivot Regency?" I apologize. Pivot Holiday Park and Center Elementary School. That answer is no. Even if we redistricted, they still won't fit. So what we're looking at now is we're looking at taking the updated data on October 2nd. The state uses October 2nd as the window when all students would have matriculated in or out, and the population stabilizes. In other words, the state knows, as we do, that over the next 30 days of school, students will continue to enroll in other districts. So October 2nd is the date they use for PSSAs as cutoff for our standard roster. So on October 2nd, we're going to look at running the algorithm again for the next five years and look at the redistricting again at that point.
I think it's time we tell parents.
I totally agree with you. I think that the I-hurd, I think I'm going, this group's going, it's only going to be this Regency kids and modulars.
Well, I don't know anything, yeah.
All of this stuff is floating, and I think it's just, we have to be open. And like you said, they're not going to believe it's happening until the district sends a notification. I think the district needs to send the notification, and we need to give a deadline to that.
These parents come month after month after month and just want an answer. And now it's going to impact every elementary child, and those parents want answers.
I agree.
Probably what's going to impact them most of all, though, is the money left in the 2014 bond because there's only $4.1 million left. So after Rich talks about, you know, we're going to have a study to see what needs done in the different buildings, I'm just curious, my concern is there's not going to be any money left.
Well, what are we going to do with 251 kids, Vicki?
I didn't spend the money. 2,000, I didn't spend the 2014 bond, the majority of it. I didn't buy the bus garage. I didn't buy the buses. I didn't buy the stuff that was taken out of that.
We're being impacted by the buses.
I'm just saying, I mean, really, we've been using that fund as a go-to fund. You know, we need items in the safety items, we spend it out of that fund. That's the go-to fund in the district, is that fund. So, you know... Kevin?
Dr.... Oh, I agree with you. I think we do have to have a little bit more of the transparency back, some type of redistricting.
Right.
Because they don't fit. I've been saying it. We went from five to four. Now we want to go to three. I...
And we're 144 off, 150-ish off, whatever, what Dr. Glasspool just said.
Still a major capital project to do, though, but Vicki's got a point. I mean, you only have so much money in the pot. I mean, you can't just...
I agree that we have so much money in the pot.
Don't disagree with that argument.
I don't agree with that. I know there's $4.1 million in the... I'll still call it the Regency bond because that's...
All those things can be true at the same time. Yes, we have a financial issue, but yes, we have more kids than we have space right now. So we have to work with what we have to solve the problem.
Well, I think one way or another, we're going to have to redistrict, whatever we decide to do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but we also can't depend on borrowing more money either.
John, what happens when there is not...
I'm not saying anything about borrowing money, Steve. I want the parent community to know... I want the parent community to know, this is what's happening.
John, what happens, what happens if we need to borrow more money?
Wouldn't be in our best interest. We have to...
No one's asking about that.
Nobody asked about borrowing more money.
Nobody asked about construction. I'm saying, we know we're having these conversations, tell the parent community that we're redistricting.
Why would you tell your parents we're redistricting right now?
The last I heard, they were fine with staying over there.
Kevin?
Because you're board president. You're the board president, Kevin.
Kevin?
So...
Kevin?
I'm going to continue to move on. I appreciate that.
No, do we have to make a motion for this? Because I will happily make a motion that we be transparent with the parent community.
You can...
The parent, we have a meeting scheduled for October 2nd that Dr. Glassell just explained, and the community, that's an open public meeting.
I think they should have letters before that.
We've got meetings every Tuesday.
I make a motion that we tell the parents that they're, and send a letter out before the October 2nd meeting, that there will be redistricting in this coming school year for this, for the following school year. We need to tell them. Right. We need to tell them.
There has to be a vote to consolidate. That would be a vote to consolidate.
No one's voting to consolidate. We're saying redistrict.
Well, I don't think we can redistrict.
This is why we're shifting kids from Regency to Pivik to Center to hear the...
I apologize if I've misled the board. The meeting scheduled in October right now is October 10, October 17, October 24. What I'm saying is I'm going to use October 2nd student data, and we're going to then work with VEBH and plug that into the algorithm with updated numbers to get a five-year projection so we have better numbers than what we have right now. So the data will be 12 months earlier.
So, I go back to the same thing. I'm making a motion that by the end of September, we inform the elementary parent community that there will be a redistricting occurring this school year. Please watch our district website for meeting notifications, whatever it may be.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I am.
We haven't voted to consolidate.
We're not voting to, it's not to consolidate.
It's part and parcel.
Yeah, I don't understand why.
Why would you redistrict if you're not consolidating? Why would you redistrict? Can you answer that?
Because we keep saying we have to redistrict, so let's tell the parents we're redistricting.
I'm not going to redistrict without consolidating. I don't prefer to redistrict. I know, and Dr. Glassell has recommended, that we need to consolidate to three elementary schools. That's his recommendation, I agree, and that will take redistricting because you're closing a school. I'm not going to just redistrict for the sake of redistricting, that makes no sense. You have to consolidate.
It's all one conversation.
What's the why? I will not vote just to redistrict without consolidation. That makes no sense.
I'm not saying to vote to redistrict. Again, don't put words in my mouth.
What are you making, if you're making a motion, you want to vote?
I said, I'm making a, I said, do I have to make a motion? I just asked that to Dr. Glassell.
The motion did have a vote?
I said I'd like to make a motion that we notify the parents, because you keep on saying that no one will believe that any of these conversations are happening unless they get a notification from the school district.
So when do you want to tell them they're going to be redistrict?
Keep on talking about we have to do this for the next school year. We have to have these conversations for consolidation, redistricting, construction. It's one conversation.
It's one conversation, not redistricting separately.
Last time we did this, we had the redistricting done by October. It started. So this is why I feel like we're totally behind.
I don't think we're behind because we had the parent committee, and that was part of that discussion, was what if? And then the parent committee submitted their recommendations.
And the parent committee never even mentioned one modular.
It's been K-6, and that was the recommendation to stay with K-6, because the board had other discussions prior to that. So the board did agree to go with that. We voted on that, and it's a process. And that process started whenever we started the parents committee. Dr. Glassell and Dr. Yamnitsky knew this from past and got the parent committee together to get community involvement. We've had that, and it's ongoing, and now we're to this point. And Dr. Glassell has recommended that we consolidate to the three elementaries and do what it takes to accommodate all the students in those three elementaries with whatever physical accommodations we need to make to our buildings. So I wouldn't support just redistricting without a purpose behind it. The purpose is consolidation, to provide the best education with our resources. And our resources include our buildings and our staff. I'll support consolidation to three elementary schools if anyone wants to support that and talk about that tonight, but I thought we were going to get more current numbers from the October 2nd numbers when we meet in October to discuss that. I'm willing to do it tonight. I was willing to do it months ago, once we got the recommendation from the parents committee to stay K-6.
I believe I can have all that information together with VEBH and everything by the 17th, which is the next facilities committee meeting, not...
Of September?
October.
I'm asking that we tell parents in September.
Again, if there are...
Because rumors and random people saying whatever, it's causing anxiety, so just tell parents. Be aware, pay attention to our website, and if it comes from us as a school district, then they're getting accurate information.
We don't need to make a motion for that. That's a public service announcement.
I just asked him if I had to.
Dr. Glassell can say now. We don't have to make a motion to do public service announcements. Pay attention to the website. I don't understand why that has to be a motion.
It's, you could or you can't, but I think what you need, administration needs to know whether they should put something out on the website that says at some point, I think what you're saying, at some point, there will be redistricting in 2018-19 school year, but we don't know yet what it will be. Please follow the website.
I'm fine with that.
Meeting notices, that's all I wanted in a notification. I just asked if that had to be a motion or if you just give an instruction.
I could probably do something, elementary school, open house.
That's, I don't care what we do, how we tell people, but I want them to have accurate information.
We're in the 95% of parents that tend to open house, probably more than see a flyer in a backpack with the other 50 flyers put in there, so, you know, I will, I see Dr. Yamnitsky taking notes, and we'll get something out there to the principals...
There does not need to be a motion.
To notify parents in some capacity that there's a possibility of a redistricting next year.
You are publicly sitting here.
We're telling everybody already. I know what I'm saying.
We've been talking about it. There's nothing new.
Put together something to put on the website that tells parents to watch.
Okay. Finish with your report, Mr. Zuko.
I, Mr. Zuko? Just for the record, I just, I still don't understand where this board's going to go, because we have, VEBH has instruction to take a look at our buildings and see when it immediately needs done. So then we're going to, you know, just redistrict them. Like, where are we going to put them? And we still haven't decided. Do we need to build? Can they fit? Do we use modulators? And you're just going to say redistrict.
I hope to have all of this information to you available on the October 17th.
And then what happens if there's no money? Nobody wants to talk about that, because it's not about the money, but it is.
So, Ms. Rossler, what would happen if there is no money? So what are you suggesting or proposing does happen if there is no money, but we still are overcrowded?
I actually think, and I understand things need done, but I actually don't agree with going to VEBH and say, take a look at all the schools. You know, I do think that we need to decide on the Regency parent, kids, students, build modulators, whatever we decide to do, and redistrict. Go from there, take the cost savings and fix the schools.
I'll just let you guys know.
Thank you.
People provided me with directions that were very explicit and four steps last week, and I've taken action.
I agree.
All right, okay, I just want to make sure...
And in that line too, Dr. Glassell, when we, when it was brought up and agreed by board members that we would be open to looking at modulators, I would like to see a presentation in that light. I would expect to see a presentation from a professional company who provides 21st century classrooms in a modular format. 21st century classrooms, top notch. I'd like to see a presentation, and there's even been suggestions, could we have one brought in to look at?
I'll tell you what, I'll add that to the September facilities meeting.
Yes, thank you. I don't, I don't want to see that from VEBH. Their specialty is architecture. I would like to see it from a specialist in modulators, the best of the best.
I'll get that for September.
That's what our kids deserve.
Okay.
I agree.
About wrapping up? Did that just about wrap it up?
Yeah.
All right.
Facilities?
Finance committee? Michelle? I would say one last thing, Dr. Glassell.
Yes, absolutely.
I think it was originally stated when we started consolidating schools, building schools, remodeling schools, that when we were all said and done, and everything was finalized, and the kids were in those areas, we were going to have to redistrict at that time. And Michelle, in inquiry to what your concern was about the 150 students that are off, yes, based on demographic studies, we are 150 off, but now we have to take that into consideration, and that, and they're not all in one of our sending zones.
Right.
So the whole thing is going to be done based on three facilities, and that's the way it's going to be. We knew that from the very beginning. This is not a big surprise. And I think it'll probably be the final one, but I believe there are other school districts that redistrict every two or three years, depending on how the population shifts. And again, we're only talking about our elementary students, and I don't mean to use the word "only," but some people confuse that we're going to, you know, change everything, but we've only going to have three, and we're all, even if we did this every two or three years, we'd probably just be tweaking the edges. We're not going to be seeing mass migrations of people from one community being split up. We didn't do that last time, and we won't do it again, you know, we won't do it in the future. I, I hope that squelches some of the rumors, and Dr. Glassell will get the information for us, I hope, and we will have it at our next facilities meeting. Thank you.
I'll add to that, I don't support redistricting every two to three years. Right.
That's silly.
You did say that.
No, I said, some school district, if you have a, if you have a housing plan that's way over on one side...
But I don't agree with it.
Okay, can we move on?
And then we don't have enough students for that school. What are you going to do with it?
Finance committee, Michelle Steppen, chairperson, recommend approval to consolidate bond-issue funds into one account, Fund 35, effective June 30, 2017.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the COMDOC proposal for three, additional three years as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question, John. You can look at the scenario that happened with Airmark and ABM, where we thought Airmark was the, you know, the best deal at one time, and then ABM came in. So could this be one of the scenarios, if we would go outside to get another bid?
If we would do that, we, right now, we're in an existing contract, and the problem if we do that is you'd have to get bought out by the company, and they'd have to put up all that capital, so they wouldn't be able to roll that into a new deal. What makes this appealing is we get, we get better equipment, we get three months of no payments in this school year, lighten up a little bit of the budget load, and, you know, and save a little bit of money on top of that. If we waited three years, we may be able to negotiate a better deal, but three years from now, you know, a lot can change in that time. So the idea of adding an extension of two years to save a little bit of money and to waive three months of payments, it makes it an appealing, an appealing decision. We probably could get a better year, a better deal, if we would go out to bid, but considering the fact we're in an existing contract, we have three years remaining on that contract, and having to have someone buy that contract out essentially is going to make it very unappealing for any competition to try to take that on.
Well, how many years do we have left now?
It's, we have two years remaining, so that's what, if I said three, I meant to say two years remaining.
Okay, so then we're going to extend it for additional three, so it's a five-year contract.
Five-year, five-year deal.
Wow, okay.
I'm only going to support this because you've changed the language in the contract from the last time we spoke about cutting a position, because, number one, that's never been a conversation or a discussion, and I appreciate that they brought that to us as a potential for the future, but I'm not in support of it if it's in the contract as part of the agreement. And since you've taken that out, I will support that, and that gives flexibility for the future of whatever the district decides to do, so.
But my concern, John, with that statement is that was part of the cost savings. A lot of it.
It was, it was a big chunk of the savings, yes, absolutely it was.
So now, this is not a biggest savings since we take that, took that out.
That's correct.
First of all, just so everybody understands, what positions we add, maintain, or eliminate has nothing to do with COMDOC. They just said that they felt that you could save money with the type of equipment that they're installing, but they're not, as part of the agreement, requiring any, any, any say in what positions we keep for our employment staff.
Except for the fact that they quoted us a savings dollar amount, and when I asked them, did that include that staff cut? And they said yes.
Yes, that's their proposal on what they believe you're saving, but there's not going to be anything in the contract, or the lease extension, I should say, that COMDOC or we, the district, are presently saying what we're doing with any of our positions. Just so everybody understands that.
But it's not worth, there's not as much savings.
You may not, yes, you may feel there's not as much savings, but I'm just telling you, it's not going to be a term of their agreement.
Right, I didn't expect that to be, but...
Okay, thank you.
It does definitely lessen the effect of the savings, but there still is a savings at the end of the day, and, you know, the other, the other thing is, we get a machine that's brand new, and it's designed to be faster and more efficient for the building. So I don't see, I don't see what the downside is of this, other than if we waited three years and then went back out on the marketplace, but, you know...
There was no guarantee.
There's no guarantee three years from now that the market prices are going to go up or down, so we're, we take a little bit more of a gamble. This locks us in two more years and get better equipment on top of that. So it makes sense to me, but it doesn't matter that much to me, you know what I mean?
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of 2017-18 TRAN resolution as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
John, can you please explain this to the public?
I'll jump in real quick to help John on that. The district previously approved a line of credit through S&amp;T Bank in case we would need it, and as part of that process, we have to adopt a debt resolution. And again, that line of credit would not exceed 1.5 million. We are allowed to have a maximum of two draws. There'll be an origination fee of $1,000, and the interest rate is 2.07%, but it is only incurred if we actually do a draw. Hopefully, you won't have to, but the business office would like to have that available in case we have any cash flow issues later in the fiscal year. Again, this is pursuant to the existing line of credit that was authorized at the last meeting.
So if we don't agree to this, and we don't get state funding, then we can't pay our bills.
Well, right now, I understand your cash flow is okay.
We're in good shape.
But there could be something that could come up later in the year that would cause a problem.
It's kind of a backup plan in case things, I don't think we intend to use it, it's just something in case we need it.
June, June historically has been, been a pretty tough month for us because there's no money coming in really, a little bit from the state, but we still have payroll, we still have a bond payment in May which affects June, and it's a, June's historically a tough month, and I don't want to get in the position where we're scrambling in May, you know, asking you guys to approve something if we don't have to do that. If we just get it done now, then it makes me breathe a little bit easier when I see that money starting to decrease before the tax revenue comes in again in July and August.
Again, as mentioned last meeting, if you do a draw, that draw has to be paid off by June 30. So again, you're only gonna pay interest if you do a draw and only for the days that it's outstanding.
We may have to still look for one for 18, 19 school year in July before the tax money really starts to roll in, so that's something, you know, we'll have to start looking at, you know, in a few months from now, but at least for this year, we don't have to worry about cash flow. That's, that's a relief.
Thank you. In the last several months, how many times have you had to explain that?
I understand it, Rich. I'm just asking the question to some people out there when they like to say they're borrowing money.
Over and over.
To spend freely.
Okay, motion? I was talking to John, but that's alright.
Rich, Vicky's got a good point. People do spread bad rumors.
Hear them every day.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of treasurer's report and bill payments for July.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have discussion. So I prepared like a little statement scenario, and I want the board to think about this. We talk about policy because I'm gonna make a motion to add to policy too, but in light of recent events, I'm voting no tonight on approving the treasurer's report. The reason I'm voting no is, no is because the Plum Borough School District is in dire financial straits, borrowing money to pay our bills, and therefore, I believe there needs to be more accountability and transparency through policy to our administrators, to the school board, and the community on how our tax dollars are spent. I'll be making a motion tonight in policy to add 611 to the agenda, to lower the expenditure amount for board approval on all purchases outside the operational expenses. A red flag was brought to my attention when the board did not approve to pay for an expense out of the GOB funds, the 2014 bond. The same expense was stated to have been previously purchased by the board because it was supposedly an aligned item in the previous month's treasury report that was already approved without board discussion. So in theory, we could've approved the purchase of the expenditure and payment through the treasurer's report when payment was denied through the GOB, but this is spending money without transparency and accountability. So who determines the want versus needs? Should we be buying things like cameras and security vestibules for the high school and paying that out of the 2014 GOB fund, or should that come out of the high school budget? I mean, I just think the school district is broken when I hear that we're purchasing things out of budgets, and I don't care what dollar amount it is, school code says $100, you know, putting it on a line item in the treasurer's report, you know, and that's how we approve spending money in this district when we're in bad shape financially? You know, there's yearbooks on there, $800 for yearbooks. I gave my yearbook away. I didn't ask the school district to buy yearbooks. Like, I just, we're using this 2014 GOB fund as a go-to fund. How are we gonna pay for more cameras in this school district that we need, the vestibule outside, gates and signs? Are we gonna use the GOB fund? And we're talking, we have to put a place where these kids can go and there's no money. So we have money in our, in our budget, and I think this school board needs to cut, step back and say, we wanna see all expenses and approve them so we can be transparent in this school district with taxpayers' dollars. And I, I just, this struck me, this is a big red flag, how this happened. Telling me we approve stuff in the treasurer's report on a line item, and I have to read 80 pages to understand what is operating budget and what is, you know, needed, wanted, it just, it doesn't make sense. I think this board needs to take a look at that through policy 611 and change the way we do things.
I agree.
I'd like to speak as well. I agree with Mrs. Rossler. It was a red flag during the committee of the whole that there was a purchase for $27,000 at the high school and board policy 611 calls for board approval for purchases over $19,000. I also would like to see that policy opened up quickly so that we can amend that amount. The board needs to have closer scrutiny on these types of purchases, and in the meantime, I would like to request that our business manager, Mr. Zahorec, if he could possibly create some kind of quick tracking tool that would just be a simple word document that the board can go in on a routine basis and track any purchases if we set it at a 10,000 limit, or whatever he would suggest based on school code. I would like to see that tracking tool set up for the board so that the board doesn't have the chore that Mrs. Rossler described of going through 80 pages trying to track down where $27,000 purchases that didn't come before our eyes and should've come before our eyes. Would that be possible, Mr. Zahorec? Or is there some type of document that you can set up for us that'd be brief and easy? I don't wanna consume your time, but if you could set...
I can. There's a report I can print right out of ProSoft, set a dollar threshold, run a report, put it online for you guys to look at. Absolutely.
That would be helpful in the meantime. The day-to-day operating expenses, this is when we're buying things. I wanna see what we're buying, and honestly, I think we should give a school code over $100.
Yeah, it's a school code, Section 508, says anything over 100 needs to be board-approved.
I think that could be...
It'd override any policy, yeah.
Are we talking about things that need a purchase order, or are we talking about everything? Because if we're talking about everything, we'll have a very difficult time operating.
Yeah, what the school code is talking about, a lot of your monthly expenditures you have already approved because you approved a contract, for example, even utilities.
Right, that's operating to me.
Those things come every month, but one thing that I think we need to clarify, because I think there was quite a bit of confusion at the end of that meeting, whether or not you amend your policy is obviously up to the board, but I want you to know that the purchase that was discussed did not occur, and it is still up, in my opinion, for the board to vote on whether or not the purchase is made.
Except for when I asked how it was paid, it was said it was paid on a treasurer's report on a line item.
I, I'm not...
You're already...
I'm not disagreeing with what you were told. I'm just saying, in looking into it, it appears that the purchase never occurred. I think there was confusion among the people who were informing the board of something. It wasn't accurate, and whether or not the money comes from the GOB fund or your general budget, those kind of things should be voted upon by the board ahead of time.
It's over for $19,000, $19,100. I'd like to lower that amount.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that item, even if it was $10,000, should've come to the board for approval, and it still has to come to the board for approval.
Agreed.
In other words, that, that number that's in your policy is coming, is more, I suspect it was intended to reflect the mandatory bidding requirements of the school code. But even if it's not a mandatory bid item, such as purchasing Pepham or Co-Stars, the board still has to authorize the actual...
We'll put 611 on the agenda.
And, and then Mr. Price will be able to...
You can do what you wish. I just wanted to make it clear because a lot of these folks out there come to our meetings that that purchase never did go through.
Except for I was told it did, and that's what drew the red flag because that's how we do business. We put it on a line item in the treasurer's report, and that's how the board approves it.
It's approved after the fact.
And $800 for yearbooks and things, I don't need that.
You are correct. I think, I think everybody...
So it's approved after the fact.
Everybody was misinformed as to what was going on, including myself sitting there.
Yes.
But I just wanted to let the board know that that was not a purchase that has gone through. It's subject to the board deciding whether or not they wanna purchase those supplies.
So, John, we can talk about this more in policy because I'm gonna make a motion to put it on the agenda tonight so we can take care of this and hopefully do a better job with our wants versus needs and quit spending out of the 2014 GOB fund.
Vicky's right. That's a good point.
But it wasn't coming from that fund. That's my big, maybe that's my confusion too.
We were, we told them, you're talking about the library, are you talking about the cameras that are gonna be bought for the high school and the vestibule and the gates? Which one are you talking about?
Well, we haven't agreed to buy anything for the high school. I thought that was part of conversation for safety, but...
Well, where do you think the money would come from?
I'm not finished.
It would come from the GOB?
But I thought that was coming from the high school fund that we approved in the budget. I guess that's where my confusion is.
Haven't so far used the high school fund. We've been using the GOB as go-tos to spend. So that would be news to me.
I think it's extremely difficult with the vague concepts that we're discussing. Nobody else knows what we're talking about, and I don't think the board knows what we're talking about at this point.
Thank you, Reggie, because now I'm very confused.
I thought we were talking about furniture. That's what I believe with the origination of this conversation.
Furniture's not on the treasurer's report, bill payments for July.
Right.
I just triple-checked.
To my knowledge, what I recall is that when that presentation was made to us, we were informed that the furniture was going to be purchased out of the high school budget.
But we never approved it, though.
That's not what I said.
When did someone inform us of that?
I believe Mr. Stevens did, and he told us about the library project.
That's when we were asked about the GOB, if it would come out of the GOB, so then he did...
And he said, and to my recollection, somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, because I don't believe I am.
That's how I recall it.
He said it was coming out of the high school budget, and I believe Dr. Glasspool also said that it was coming out of the high school budget.
So that'll be on video then? Because that was a videoed meeting. That was taped.
That was committee of the whole.
Maybe it is. Vicky, I have no idea if it's on video. I'm just telling you what my recollection is.
That's how I recall the conversation.
That's a problem.
The point, the point I was trying to make is the bottom line, even though something appears in your budget, doesn't mean it gets spent.
Exactly.
Because it's a line item. It still takes board approval to actually pay or allocate the choice to go ahead and spend the money on that.
I think that maybe part of the confusion is, is are we, or maybe it's my confusion, are we suggesting that the board approves, at what level are we suggesting that the board approves purchase orders? So maybe that's where my level of confusion is.
I think that's what we wanna talk about in 611.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll move that to there. So, thank you, but I'm running now, so that's...
So treasurer's report and bill payments for July.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Recommend approval of GOB invoices.
I'm sorry. On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Food Service Committee, Mr. Hickman, Chairperson, will make a brief report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just quickly, the professional staff for the food service have all been trained on food safety and standards with professional conduct that took place over this last week. There's also a partnership now between the district and 412 Food Rescue to donate any packaged food items that were not consumed by the students and to be given to homeless shelters rather than be thrown away in order to eliminate waste. The food service is also partnering with Healthy Schools PA to try to find more ways to make our cafeteria sustainable. And then also on the menu, on the website, you can find the new menus with exciting new menu items for students right now. So if you want your children to see what delicious treats they will be having, and just once the school year starts, you can go to the website and find that now. Thank you.
Hey, Reggie, I have a quick question for you. Maybe I missed it at committee meetings, but I don't think it was discussed. How are collections going from unpaid bills?
I do not have that information in front of me, at least I don't think so.
Maybe we can talk about that at the next committee.
I think it's discussed. I recall what the...
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a number for you.
Okay.
It might be in another...
John, at what point do we have to count that as a, on a table?
It's, it's pretty much anything at the end of the fiscal year that hasn't been collected, the general fund has to make the food service fund. Was it 4,000 last year, Mike?
That's higher than usual, isn't it? Okay.
I don't know.
I thought it was 1,600 is what I recall, but I might...
Yeah.
That's a very, again, if that can wait a day, we can get that information to the board, I'll...
Okay.
Reggie, and I think too, you know, I hope that lunch prices did go up.
Yes.
Do you recall whose prices are, Reginald?
I think it went up 10 cents if I'm not mistaken.
Probably five or 10 cents.
I think it was 10 cents, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And Reggie, I have one other thing. I'd been working with Jessica that, and I know sort of you transitioned into the chair midway through, but we had been talking, her and I, about how to increase the breakfast, and I know there's a piece of it, she's looking to, she needs software of some sort to make it, I guess, user-friendly, especially at the high school, and it's similar to the Yoda Go that our kids get in elementary school that would be available for breakfast. So it wouldn't just be for the free and reduced lunch kids that are, it would be for any kid, any athlete, any after-school activity, especially during the musical when our kids are here forever and ever and ever. It's a healthy snack that meets the breakfast requirements, but in addition, would meet the sort of throw-in-your-backpack, it won't spoil type thing. So I don't know where she's at with that, but I'd really be curious to see where that is because it's something that every single student could take advantage of and should be able to take advantage of for an affordable price, for a healthy after-school snack, and it doesn't, especially if they don't want the breakfast. But as long as it's purchased or taken during breakfast time, it counts towards that reimbursement, but at the same time, we're making sure our kids are fed in the proper way. So I don't know, again, where that all lies, but I'd be happy to try to figure out a way to support that.
I will, I will look into that as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Forbes Road Career Technology Center, Jim Rogers, our representative. There's a meeting on Thursday. Intergovernmental Rental Committee, Sue Caldwell, Chairperson. We have a meeting scheduled for September 6th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. down at the Borough Building. Legislative Policy Council, Ms. Stepnick, is there a report this evening?
Just real briefly, the legislature voted to pay themselves, but could not figure out how to pay their bills. So they have a budget and no way to fund it, so at some given point, I could see various conversations occurring like we've had in the past, but they've run out of revenue options. So that's, I mean, we all could read the paper and see the news, but that's where we are.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Steve Schlock, Chairperson, recommend approval...
Dr. Glasspool, hold on. I wanted to say a couple, few things that need to be addressed. Well, first off, we recently completed Dr. Glasspool's performance evaluation for 2017, but I had a couple of questions that I wanted to address, and Kevin Del Dell, my president, might be the best to answer these. And while I didn't agree with his performance evaluation for the current year, I'd like to know why Dr. Glasspool did not have a performance evaluation done for the prior year, 2016, and also, the board agreed with five votes last spring to write a letter of reprimand and put it in his file for the multimillion-dollar budget error, and the board agreed to that, and Kevin Del Dell backed off and didn't carry through with it, and I think that needs to be, Kevin needs to address those two questions, so.
I think it's a personnel issue. I'm not gonna discuss it in public.
Well, I, I asked privately and I didn't get straight answers, so maybe, why shouldn't the community know? I mean, it's...
I didn't know, so, telling me at the same time.
Well, I mean, you didn't address me before, Kevin, so I mean, I want an answer.
I said it's a personnel matter. I'm not gonna discuss personnel.
I asked you in emails multiple times. I never got an answer, so.
I've answered your emails.
Sure it's not gonna be acceptable.
Nothing's acceptable with you.
I mean, just like how I wasn't, I'm personnel chair, wasn't even invited to complete the evaluation with you. I mean, that's, that's, what's the purpose of a personnel chair if the president's just gonna do what...
I followed the contract.
Personnel chairs should be, should be involved, or you shouldn't have a committee chairs at all. There's no purpose, the reason for them. I'm, I'm...
This is personnel. This is executive session. It doesn't matter who the employee is.
It's up to the board.
There, there are questions.
It's up to the board whether you wanna treat it as executive session or not, but I don't believe the contract for the superintendent involves the Personnel Committee. Instead, it involves all board members funneling comments through the board president.
Well, I, and I gave my input and comments, but while it wasn't on an applicable format, like Kevin says, I still gave it via email, and whether it wasn't embraced or accepted, I still gave input, which got completely ignored, as usual.
I think this is personnel too. I don't think this needs to be discussed.
I gave input, whether it was on a format or a form, it was, I still gave input, so.
And I passed that input along, and the form is from the PDE that everyone, all the other board members fill it out except...
What do you mean, you passed the input along? No, you didn't pass my input along. You said you didn't accept it because it wasn't on a form.
Yes, I did.
Why, what was the stuff about the letter of reprimand, the mention he was put on leave, the budget disgrace? I mean, all this information I put in, nothing got included, and I looked at the evaluation. I didn't, the synopsis didn't equal the comments. I mean, the grace...
I, I really think that this is personnel. I do not think it's fair right now to have this conversation in public.
Well, I ask, I ask these conversations, they're on closed doors, I don't get answers.
Steve, I understand that, but that has nothing to do with whether the fact that this conversation needs to take place now, whether it's appropriate now. You're upset about your questions not being understood, answered? That's a different conversation than whether or not we can have this conversation now, which I truly believe we cannot have now. It should be handled in executive committee.
Oh, they're not to be handled. That's the problem.
We had a meeting, actually. You could've addressed those right then and there because you're doing it in public with Dr. Glasspool here. Why didn't you just do it there? But...
I did address them. I, I sent an email.
Are there five people that wanna have this conversation? Tim, do you wanna have this conversation? Are there five people that wanna have this conversation?
No.
All right then, move forward with the agenda, please.
It's not appropriate.
Personnel Committee, Steve Schlock, Chairperson, recommend approval to accept the following resignations as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Nicole Weringia as a Regency Park 4th grade teacher effective August 24, 2017. It masters Step 2 at the contracted rate.
On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do. I just have a question to clarify. Dr. Glasspool, was this a replacement, not a new position, correct?
This is the, we have to hire an individual for the additional center elementary school kindergarten.
Okay, so this is like a reshuffle?
Yes.
This isn't the kindergarten. We voted to approve the kindergarten last week. We're not creating a kindergarten.
You have to think of it as hiring an elementary teacher, yes.
Right, thank you. Just to clarify. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following cafeteria workers as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following paraprofessionals as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Nick Mitchell as senior high-class play sponsor and musical director sponsored at contracted rates.
On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of following leaves as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Policy Committee, Vicky Rosser, Chairperson, recommend approval to accept policy seven oh seven as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I would make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just have short discussion. Now, now, we're stating for the students, staff, and volunteers, the school district buildings and grounds will no longer be open to the community during school hours. Weapons of any kind, smoking or other tobacco use, and dogs or other animals, except for service animals, are not permitted on the school property in any time. So just to be clear, during school hours, the access to our, the district property is, you're not going to be able to access it.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
And that's for the safety and security of our students.
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mrs. Rosser has a report, but also I think wants to make a motion right now.
I do, I want to make a motion to add to the agenda, policy six eleven, budget, budget purchases.
Second?
Would you want to add it to the agenda or make a change to that policy?
Do I have to add it to the agenda first to make a change? Because it's not on the agenda.
You just make, recommend a motion that you accept policy six oh six with the following change.
Yeah, if you know.
It's going to be as simple as a number.
If you know what the motion is.
Can we open it up to public discussion?
We have to open it back up.
As, as to what you wish to do, and then we also have to open up to the public for comment if they wish to make any.
So I'd like to add it to the agenda and then have John give his opinion on a dollar amount, and then we'll change the motion.
Do you want to clarify the policy number, question six oh six is tax, tax collection?
It's six eleven, I apologize, six eleven.
Thank you, John.
So there's a second?
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, John, um, did I, Lee?
I, I, I think you're requesting a recommendation from Mr. Zahorchak as to whether he thinks that number should be changed and what to, am I correct? Then if, based on what he may have to say, you may or may not make a motion at that point on the actual amendment of the policy, right?
Right, so that's why I just threw it up there.
And if you reach that point, then it goes to the public in case anybody has a comment.
That's fine. So we're in discussion right now?
Well, you're, you're, you're in deliberation, let's put it that way.
So John, if I were to ask you, what, what dollar amount would you put on that to replace the nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars, what would you say? What would be your recommendation?
I, I, I think it's a good idea to lower it, I really do. The reason why I say that is because it, it does create the additional set of eyes. It does create a, a potentially a, a bit of a shift in the culture, not that the culture needs shifted, but I think that it, it does, I think it creates more openness and more transparency of the things that are going to be purchased, but I don't, you know, I don't think we want to get to the point where we, you know, we, we can't operate as we normally would, buying things that we would need from a maintenance standpoint. If a boiler blows, we, we don't want to limit ourselves by saying we can't go and buy something that we need to operate the schools without getting your approval on it first. So that's something to consider. Maybe things with, with, that need purchase orders that we're currently using, maybe set in a different threshold on that, and, and, you know, if, if I'm asking, if you're asking me for a number, there's a couple of numbers that, that pop out to my head. And one is that bid number, that nineteen thousand, one hundred, and that changes every year. Another number that, that I would say would be ten thousand dollars, because that's the number, anything between ten thousand dollars and nineteen, one hundred has to have three quotes on it, doesn't need to be formally bid, but anything in that price range there, we still have to get three quotes. It may not be a bad idea to have quotes put on the agenda for board meetings.
Okay.
Five thousand dollars is another number that comes to mind, because the Chief Recovery Officer in Harrisburg School District is, that's the number that they set when they, the state appointed the Chief Recovery Officer to approve all finances for them, so, you know.
My, my thought on that, John, is the Department of the Utter General recommended the Plumber School District develop long-range financial plan, develop a business model to, model to monitor operation expenses, and develop policy and procedures to deal with weak internal controls.
I, I think we've done that internally through the district. The, the internal controls that were the issues were not reconciling benefits monthly and not reconciling cash monthly. Those were very big priorities to me.
But how about?
Those items are addressed.
Expenses themselves. I mean, I would assume when he would come back in here and if we have a policy that says the board looks over all the expenses, he'd be very happy with the school district.
Absolutely, and I, and I'll say this, you know, when you look at our supply budget, which I think is generally what we're talking about with this policy, ours is, is one of the lowest, and I, I mean, it's, it's, it's very, very low in comparison to other school districts, you know. Other school districts don't have to watch their finances to the extent that we do, because they're, there, there, there's a number of reasons for that, whether it be salaries, taxes, all that other stuff. Because of our situation, I don't think it's a bad idea to have that extra scrutiny, because when, when the state auditor comes in, they see that we have these internal controls, and I think it, it shows favorably to us to, to do things proactively as opposed to waiting for, you know, something bad to happen. So I don't think it's a bad thing, I really don't, and I don't think it's, if we're talking about things that need to have purchase orders, it's, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty purchases a year. But it does create another set of eyes, and that does help me as well.
The problem I have though still is the ways, things for approval on, through the budget transfer, I just, I have a problem with that, just going through it, looking, I mean, I'd still want to know what's being spent in the school district.
It's there, it's eighty pages.
I know it's eighty pages, but I mean.
It's only eighty pages, because it's the beginning of the year and we're buying all of our supplies. If you look at that treasures report in December, it's not going to be eighty pages. But we purchased now for the students for the entire year.
Tim, I, I bet you there's, and I'm just going to make an assumption that most board members don't even look at it.
I don't know what to tell you, you guys.
Well, that's their problem.
There's a sheer volume of information.
And that, that's part of why I asked for the tracking sheet from Mr. Zahorchak, and he graciously has agreed to do that for us, and I look forward to using that every week. So two things I'd like to question.
I'm unclear about the track, you want him to do something every week?
Just a running document.
I think this needs to be discussed in committee.
Yeah, I agree, Kevin, there's only one other person other than Tim that sits at this table, that's a, that's a professional in education that could sit here and say, this is needed, this is wanted, or this is what this should be, and it's none of us but you.
Can I finish? I wasn't finished yet. So my questions are, and I do need, I need, do need a simple tracking tool, and we can discuss that. But in the meantime, we're all in the dark, like we just realized with the twenty-seven thousand dollar library furniture purchase.
Are we in the dark?
So at any rate, I'm, I'm not done, I'm not done. So my two questions are, for Mr. Zahorchak, what would you recommend that we plug in for that number? And in conjunction with that, Mr. Price mentioned ten thousand dollars. If, if Mr. Price could give input on the legalities and the school code in relation to this.
I didn't, I didn't mention ten thousand.
You mentioned ten thousand a few minutes ago when Mrs. Rosser brought this up.
Yeah.
That's why we videotaped, you said ten thousand.
I have two, I have quite, before you.
And I need my answers, can I, can I get my answers, please, Mrs. Stepnick, before you interject again?
Sure, sure, because as finance chair, I would like to know how much time you're going to be dedicated, having John dedicate, have five people said that and said, John, that's your direction to create this spreadsheet every single week that tracks, rather than reading the, the invoices every month.
He said it would be a simple task.
Did, did five people say, do it?
Why wouldn't you want that done, Michelle?
Because I, I read this stuff, Vicky.
You don't want transparency, you don't want transparency.
You do, but other people don't, and I, I have a hard time.
Well, that's taking ownership over the responsibility that you have here as an elected official.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take, I'll take the floor back, I'll take the floor back, as I had the floor. Mr. Zahorchak, that'll be my third question, then, how long would that take you to create that simple tracking tool?
If I've got to take, do it weekly, it's going to take a little bit more time, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes probably, once a week, I mean.
But what are we tracking?
For board transparency, I just was suggesting any purchase over ten thousand, so it's not going to, from what you're saying, Dr. Glasspool, it's not going to be much, right?
No, well, it shouldn't, I mean, you heard him say it was ten to fifteen items over the course of the year, so.
So how can that even take?
Over nineteen thousand, but I, I mean, John, did you know that we were going to talk about policy six eleven and just pull that number ten out of the air, or?
No, it came to you.
Or Mr. Price mentioned that number ten, and that?
I think we need to move this to the committee. I think John was suggesting, John, I think suggested ten as a number to tie to the quote.
Based on the quotes, yeah.
Oh, and I thought, so you were just repeating, you were just echoing him. I thought maybe there was school, is there any school code or Pennsylvania Department Education direction?
Under the school code, you have to approve all expenditures or contracts over a hundred dollars. Again, that does not mean that you individually approve all those, because a lot of purchases are already subject to a, for example, your collective bargaining agreements, they set what every employee gets paid, so you don't need to individually approve those every meeting, you've already approved them when you adopted the collective bargaining agreement. But this policy states that it's the policy of the board that when funds are available, all purchases contemplated within the current budget and not subject to bid shall be made in a manner that ensures the best interest of the district. And I think what you guys are trying to do is saying, well, even though it doesn't have to be bid, and yes, it's in the budget, we still want to be able to pre-approve that acquisition or that purchase. And your question is, what money amount do you think is a reasonable number to use?
Thank you, Lee. Yes, so.
And again, and again, it doesn't matter whether it's out of G O B.
Go ahead, Sue, I ain't said nothing to you, go ahead.
Or the budget, or the budget.
I don't chomp at the bit.
You still have, you still have to approve those. For example, the example that came up at the last meeting, quite frankly, we all know, was library furniture. And there was a lot of confusion about what happened. Theoretically, because library furniture can be purchased without bidding, you could purchase three hundred thousand dollars worth of library furniture without bidding under state law, depending upon how you do it. But I think that's a number, I know that's an exaggerated number, but that's an example of things that this board needs to approve before you actually acquire it, even though it doesn't have to be bid. And not just because it's budgeted in the budget, because you don't have to spend what's in your budget, it is a budget, it's a proposal.
But policy states unless the contemplated purchase is for more than nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars.
That's right, so the question is, do you wish to lower?
So again, this, this policy.
And that's what I'm asking for Mr. Zahorchak to give his recommendations on an amount.
He did, but.
So, no, he gave three options. I, I want to know which of the three.
He said nineteen, nineteen, one, ten, and nine thousand dollars. What I'm saying is, this is like two paragraphs, we're talking about a number.
He said nineteen, ten, and five thousand dollars, I took notes.
Okay, can I?
I took notes.
All right, all right. Mrs. Caldwell, are you done? Can I?
No, because I didn't get my answer from Mr. Zahorchak.
Okay, calm down, it ain't all that serious. Calm down.
It is serious, it's transparency.
Ten thousand, ten thousand.
We didn't want to give financial transparency.
So you're recommending ten, and I'm fine with ten.
Ten thousand would make sense, because it's, it's the threshold that you have to get quotes for. If we have to get a quote for something, you have to keep a record of that anyhow, why not take it to the board anyhow?
Agreed.
It would make sense to me.
I'm agreeable to ten thousand. Now I have my answers, thank you.
My question is, John.
Wait, hold up.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Reggie, I apologize, I realize you were chomping at the bit.
Thank you, I'm glad I can get the mic right about now, I appreciate that. Actually, I agree with Kevin that, that maybe we need to move this discussion elsewhere, because I, I really don't know if I'm comfortable voting on a, a policy change five minutes after the policy change has been announced, and I know we're talking about transparency, I'm not even sure that's really fair to the public to put a policy out there to make a change such as this, and it is a major change, and then just spring it on the public and then vote on it at the same time. So I agree with Kevin, I think this is something that we should probably have a little bit more conversation about. And it also, I also wonder about the thought that this is one incident that we're talking about, and we're going to have such a strong reaction to one incident in, in, in making a, a change such as this, where maybe we should just deal with the issue behind that one incident.
I don't think.
But I get back, I, I'll let you go in a minute, Steve, but I get back to, I think my original point was that, and the president has it right, that I think we need to just have more conversation about this issue.
I don't think you're going to assume it was just one incident, probably, but I think he's right, though, we need tran, we need more transparency.
Well, it's discussed in policy, that's why we have committee meetings.
But I, I don't see what the problem would be, or why would there be any harm with it, because I do believe in transparency, Mr. Hickman, but with this situation, and just because we are buying things at the, in the beginning of the year, I think it would be a good idea to act on this one now, because of our financial state of our district, it would just bring more clarity to the board to know what's being bought, also taxpayer dollars, transparency, you know, with them, I just think it's important.
I agree with you, and I think ten thousand dollars is a reasonable number, you know, since we're talking about the high school. The high school six hundred, six-ten accounts that they used to use here, I looked at two thousand, and it was four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. This year, it's like a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, in the pen, in the past eight years, we have substantially reduced that, 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 that amount that the, that the high school specifically has spent on, I'm not saying items, but everything from pencils to vapor, to replacement desks, et cetera.
And we have more students this year than last year. But I have, I do have one question. John, because you had brought up in the email exchanges to all of us back and forth, and I'm trying to keep, I am legitimately trying to keep track of where you were going with this, that you said you might want to consider changing a policy, but then in addition, noting that there could be an instance, like where we have an emergency, and you can't call a board meeting if we have to purchase a twenty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment to make the school run, and it's Friday afternoon at four o'clock, and you need this piece of equipment, what are you going to do? Call an emergency board meeting, and then we violate the advertisement and all that?
That's why this should be discussed in committee, not here.
That's my question, is how do we word that lead to make sure we, we, we have it covered, so Dr. Glasspool has the ability to say, we need this, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, or we don't go to school on Monday, or we have catastrophic damage to this building, I want to make sure we're not so rigid in the policy that we leave that piece out, because I, I want to make sure that the people we've hired to do their jobs have the ability to do their jobs as well.
I have no problem with.
Yeah, I don't either.
But I agree. I think maybe we should take it back to policy, try to have John look at it a little bit more clearly for clarity for the board. I have no problem with the 10,000. I agree.
I have no problem either with that.
I think 10,000 is a fair amount where we can have that transparency. I do agree that it needs to go to policy.
Sure. Like I said, I was in total agreement with it. And then when John put that piece in about, you know, but understand, we could have an emergency and not have a board meeting coming up and need access to funds, and we've just tied your hands, and I don't want that.
I can look at other PSBA policies and see what's out there.
That would be good, actually, if we could have some input on that piece of it.
In the school code language, you can waive some of that if there is what they call, quote unquote, "an emergency." So that's, that's school code. But again, I know we're talking about a policy, but, you know.
Or who waives it? Like, do we waive it retroactively? Who says, "And I didn't approve that policy?" I mean, I could see all those things going on. Or, "I didn't approve that expenditure," or "Why didn't we get it cheaper?" I mean, I could see those things happening.
Well, you could have emergency meetings without public notice.
Okay. So that solves the problem.
And if it involves a repair, there's a process where you deal with PDE to waive bidding requirements and things like that.
So that's good. That's a non-issue.
Michael just sent us some information out this calendar year. It's 10-5, and then 19-4, so, you know, we're a little behind with our policy. Six-eleven, but this is a good time.
Your policy does reference the Consumer Price Index adjustments that the state now does annually.
19-400.
I was about Director Administrator Services. We don't have that position anymore. So that needs change, too. Agreed.
All right. So where are we here?
I guess we're going to move that to policy, to the committee.
Yeah.
Let's put this on as the first policy.
I'm okay to vote on it now. I don't, we have five people to vote.
Did you make a motion to vote? I mean, I don't want to, you know, we want to follow Robert's rules.
We read the motion, please, that's on the table.
I don't think there's a motion.
I want to make sure I see the language. I'm not voting on something that I can't read or say.
I'm fine with going to policy.
I think we're moving at the policy.
Taking it to policy.
Are you fine, Mrs. Rossler?
I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody has an issue with the number.
Okay. Did we vote on Alice? No.
Can I finish my?
You mean, we went through all of this to do something that we would have normally done in a poll, in a, in a regular committee meeting, and we just spent almost a half-hour, an hour?
Rich, I would vote on it tonight. Does not five people want to do that?
But you do this all the time. You get a voting meeting, you want to stick something that you want, and you wait till the cameras are on, and then we make a big issue about this, and now we finally agree, yes, we should discuss this in the committee section and then decide whether we should vote on it or not.
People can't, people can't make decisions. Really, there shouldn't be a decision on this, Rich.
But this was, this was all spurred by an expenditure that was never even made, and you're calling it transparency.
Wait a second, Rich. The expenditure was told that it was purchased, and it was told it was paid for out of a previous G O B on a line item, or not, no G O B, on the treasures report. So I'm going by what I was told. If you know something different, then you do.
I don't know anything different.
I know what I was told to me. That's what I'm going by.
I don't know anything different either.
And a red flag for $27,000 for furniture.
I never saw it come across the desk for approval, so I didn't ever approve that expenditure.
But there are board members that said they did.
Well, somebody, I mean, let's put it this way. Every time somebody brings something up, and they go, "Well, how are you going to pay for that?" And they go, "Well, we can do this." That doesn't mean that's the way it's going to be, but somebody always wants to know how we're going to pay for something. And when you ask them, maybe they don't have the right answer. Maybe they give you the wrong answer. Okay? That's, you know, that's why we're supposed to discuss this stuff by committee. That's it.
But here's the problem, like Dr. Glasspool said, Rich, and why I think we should vote on it tonight, but I'm not going to argue the point, is everything's getting spent right now. This is where all the spending happens, so you obviously don't want to keep an eye on it and bring any transparency.
Oh, boy, that's really, oh, I don't want to keep an eye on it. Ooh. Come on.
All right.
Let's keep it moving. Let's keep it moving.
Yeah. I think we decided we're going to move the policy, so let's move on.
So, Ms. Rossler, so finishing.
I'm going to finish my policy discussion. Yeah, my report. We had limited discussion on policy at the committee of the hall. The board discussed policy oh-six meetings. Under this section, Guidelines for Citizens in the Role of the Presiding Officer, concerns that the president is not taking control of the meetings. We will talk about this and continue to have discussion at the next committee meeting. We talked about the org chart, the policy zero-zero-eight at the committee meeting. I pointed out that the safety director is on the org chart, but the majority of the board is against filling this position. It was discussed at the meeting that this position can stay on the org chart as a board-approved position but remain unfilled. We talked about policy one-twenty-six, class size. It was discussed, and we did not move forward with any changes. Instead, the board asked the administration to provide info on how they determine what is an acceptable class size. We just hired a teacher for kindergarten at center because of high enrollment and do not believe our class sizes are unacceptable, that would hinder the students' learning. The board did not discuss, but will next month, one-oh-four, non-discrimination in employment, two-thirty-nine, for foreign exchange student, three-oh-four, employment in district staff, three-oh-four-point-one, nepotism, seven-eleven, use of school facilities. Then we have two new policies, three-ten in nine-seventeen. Three-ten is use of district intellectual property, and three, nine-seventeen is institutional review board. So, that's policy. Thank you.
Safe Schools Committee, Vicki Rossler, Chairperson, recommend approve the Alice presentation for students in grades seven through twelve.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Rossler has a brief report.
I have a brief report. Sue Caldwell, at a committee meeting, a couple committees, or maybe last committee, she suggested the district request a Pennsylvania State Police RVAT assessment. That's Risk and Vulnerability Assessment Team. We're moving forward with this, and the district has requested this assessment of the Plum Borough School District. So I'd like to thank Sue Caldwell for her input and important suggestion. A big announcement that I hope the community is aware of, Alice's presentation will be held tomorrow, August 23rd, at the high school at seven?
Seven.
In the auditorium?
Wait. What's the flyer say? You guys have them right in front of you. Seven or six?
Make sure.
Everybody should have a flyer.
Seven o'clock in the high school. Seven o'clock in the high school auditorium.
Seven o'clock, high school auditorium.
Thank you. Seven o'clock in the high school auditorium. This is an important step in Alice's training because the training will include the students at the high school. I personally want to thank Officer Little and the entire police department for working with the school district to provide this important training to our staff and students. Besides this important forum, the district will be holding an additional forums. November 15th is Drug and Alcohol Awareness. February 28th is Mental Health Awareness, and administration is waiting to hear back from, on the, get more information on the reality tour. Last summer, the board challenged administration on how the district can do better to prevent and control bullying in the school district. We are implementing Second Steps Bowling Program, and I've asked Gail to say a couple words on that tonight. Very well. Thank you, Gail. Thank you, Mrs. Missy. Administration has made several recommendations and is waiting on direction from the board. The recommendations are to hire an additional daytime security individual at the high school for $31,000. Replace exterior gates to be determined. Entrance booth, $11,000. Metal detectors, $16,500. Additional high school cameras, $31,248. So, we're still, we're waiting for board direction on that. And then one more thing I have to say is I just have an announcement. The safety coordinator is not going to be filled. We do not have a majority to hire. Just to recap, in 2016, February of 2016, the board created this position. I am not wavering in my support for this position. It was created on a six-three majority vote, along with the support of eight members of the Safe and Support of School Ad Hoc Committee, as stated in a letter from 2016, which is February 16th, 2016, have asked the board to support, to fill this position. After approximately a year and a half from creating this position, this past spring, the board finally agreed to post the position, and then the board interviewed several candidates for the position, and then the board and the candidate agreed to an employment contract pending board approval at the voting meeting. To the, to the community, it's important to tell you that, in my opinion, an outstanding candidate was chosen for the position. As one board member said, the candidate would have been a perfect fit to work well and relate well with the students. But for what I believe are personal differences on this board, the agenda item to hire the candidate was not brought to a public vote due to changed minds and lack of support from several board members on this board. I believe this is a prime example how personal agendas by board members who are consistently working together against other board members are preventing and will continue to prevent this district from moving forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
I have one question. I just, I mean, one, Vicki, I just wanted to comment on Officer Little's presentation. Outstanding. I thought he did a great job. It truly shows what our school resource officer is doing in our schools. But he could be doing more. You know, I wish there could be more, but obviously, you know, reaching 1,800 students in small, like, five different schools. Thank him again for his time, and Alice and I look forward to that program.
And the entire police department. I mean, with Chief Armstrong, Mr. Thomas, the council, we have a good relationship with them, you know, and they, we work well with them, so there are some positives.
I would, I would like to say that in light of Ms. Rossler's comments, I didn't, did not get a chance to vote on the safety coordinator. I would not have voted for it, so I wasn't of flipped mind. I didn't change my mind or anything like that. When I first got engaged with the board, I made it clear that I did not think that that position was necessary. I remain consistent with my belief in that. I've been in unsafe schools. This is not one of them. None of the elementary schools that I can, as I can gather, are unsafe, which is why on principle and based on my analysis of where the district is, I was going to vote no for it if I was given the opportunity.
All right. Just the gate, the gate bid came in, or quote came in at $3,640 for those that are interested. Transportation Committee, Mr. Jim Rogers, Chairperson, recommend approval to use remaining 2016 bond issuance earmark for buses to purchase three 2013 '72 passenger buses at a cost of $29,600 per bus.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to provide shuttle service to the American Legion Post nine-eighty car crews on September 10, 2017, from 10:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Rogers, brief report today.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. Just a quick item. Those parents who may have not found where their student, their child will be getting a bus, the bus stops on the bus stop locator, which is on a transportation website. Also, the buses' locations are on all the school websites. So all you have to do is go online to the websites, and you can find out what, where your student will be picking up. Thank you.
Thank you. President's report, Kevin Del Dell. Mr. Del Dell has a brief report.
Yes, thank you. I hope everyone had a nice, enjoyable summer. School starts next Tuesday, August 29th. You can check the updated bus schedules Mr. Rogers has mentioned for your bus schedule. And we are ready for school. I have several comments on the Chinese students that Mrs. Caldwell mentioned in her report, but I just want to add a few things. We do have forty Chinese students, fifth graders, that are going to visit our district